And we're calling this meeting of the Board of Trustees of Weatherford College, meeting in the Arlene Strain Community Room of the Dawes Student Center at 225 College Park Drive to consider an act on the posted agenda. I've just called us to order, and Brent will do us the invocation.
Yes, ma'am. Please bow with me. Lord, again, we're very thankful to you for being here on this beautiful day you've created for us. Thank you for our board and the time they spend. I want to especially thank you for our veterans today who have fought for us, provided a way for us to meet and to learn and to better ourselves, and for our students to better themselves. We thank you for all these things. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Brent. In case you're wondering now, I'm not Mac. He hopefully will be here later. He was called into a late meeting yesterday. Let us do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. So, Crystal, do we have someone on the agenda? No? Okay. So, that brings us to the President's report, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair and members of the Weatherford College Board of Trustees, I would like to give a few brief recognitions and employee notices. Recognizations: Congratulations to Dr. Arlene Atkins, Tracy McKinley, and the entire WC community on completing the most successful SACC reaffirmation visit in Weatherford College history. Dr. Atkins will be providing details during the report section of this meeting. WC recently gave away approximately $6,000 worth of candy to an estimated 4,000 children during the Safe Halloween event. A special thanks goes to the WC police, the City of Weatherford PD, the Weatherford Fire Department, Life Care EMS, the WC Police Academy, FOL Organization, Phi Theta Kappa Honor Society, CBRE, and Mr. Candy Gorilla, Bob Glenn. We appreciate the broad community support. Congratulations to Weatherford College on becoming one of only two colleges or universities in the state of Texas to earn a Financial Transparency Star from the State Comptroller Glenn Hagar. Dr. Cantrell will be presenting the award later in this meeting. Employee notices: DMAC Local requires the college president to provide the names of contracted employees that have resigned since the last board meeting. Joshua Gunter, an instructor in mathematics, has resigned effective 12/31/21. Tony Hurt, the WCWC facility supervisor, has resigned effective 10/26/21. Donnie Purvis, the director of financial aid, has resigned effective 11/5/21. Cassandra Sanchez, the counselor of Upward Bound, has resigned effective 9/20/21. And Faith Stifler, the director of student housing, has resigned effective 11/3/21. We thank Joshua, Tony, Donnie, Cassandra, and Faith for their service and wish them the very best in future endeavors. Madam Chair, that concludes the President's report.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. This brings us to item four on the Agenda, the Consent Agenda and Financial Reports. That includes approval of the minutes, which I have read thoroughly, financial reports ending October 31, 2021, veterinary equipment and supplies. That's a real thick one. Lots of stuff they're having to buy. An annual review of the CAK local policy appropriations. We will need a motion to approve the consent agenda, which has been our practice. Do I hear that motion?
A second.
And a second? And all in favor, say aye please. Aye. That's unanimous. Thank you. Well, I heard a comment last time that, I believe it came from you, sir, that our votes were consistently unanimous. But that's a happy thing. Okay. So now we have reports, starting with the Clary Act report, and that, Dr. Farmer will take care of us on that, and the following, several items in that, and Agenda Item Five.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We do have two reports, Agenda Items 5A and 5B, that have been presented to you in writing in your packet, and we are available to provide any follow-up information or answer any questions that you might have in those. Which brings us to Item C. We have a presentation regarding academic and student services in response to trustee Judy McInally at the last board meeting, and Mr. Indy, the floor is yours, please.
Thank you, sir. In the interest of time, I'm not going to read to you the information I provided you. So what I'm going to do is some highlights about what we're doing regarding foundations and advising competencies, outcomes and efficacy. The common outcomes for our foundations course and also for our advising process are built on institutional performance measures, their completion of a college-level course, that's typically a math or a reading/writing course or one that's dependent on them, completion of a certificate or degree, completion of 15, 30, 45, and 60 credit hours, typically for the transfer intended student, one- to-two-year persistence rates, and transfer rates in general. I pulled yesterday data from the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board Accountability System regarding those measures, and I'd like to highlight some of that for you. I will send Teresa a link so that you can look at this resource. It is an outward-facing public resource that is available for your review that carries more data than I'm going to cover in this brief presentation, but you're available there to look at it. If you have questions, certainly ask about them. Regarding degrees and certificates awarded from the years 2018 to 2020, which of the most recent years were viewed in the system, Weatherford College improved by 17.4% in the graduation of associate degree completers. Specifically, the economically disadvantaged completers rose by 5.7%. In graduation rates from three, four, and six years respectively, the college rose 4.3% in associate degrees, particularly in 4.2%. For four-year graduation rates, we rose by 6.4% and 4.8% specifically in the associate degree area. So we're moving in the right direction in terms of student completion, and particularly in the degrees that we grant. In terms of one-year persistence, that's an important number to us because it tells us how many students are continuing from year one to year two. We have an awful lot of students in two-year programs and in the transfer programs. That has improved by 2.1% from the years 2018 to 2020. The two-year persistent rate has actually decreased, which may concern some of you, but I want you to understand that we don't want to hold on to students who completed associate arts and sciences degrees in sonography and radiology. What that means is an overall decrease, is possibly that we're graduating more people who are going into the workforce, and more of our students are moving in that direction. So a decrease in two-year persistence doesn't tell us that we're not performing. It may in fact tell us something quite different. In terms of transfer to senior institutions, we're up significantly in 25 to 42-hour slots, but down in the 0 to 24-hour slots, telling us that students are staying longer and they're working with us longer to go towards recompletion, even when they're transferring. And then the last highlight I'm going to give you from this data is underprepared versus prepared students earning awards. In that area, the associate degree completion rate, as you might expect, has been up significantly in the three years of the data provided.
No, sir.
We're up 5.9% in associate degrees for prepared students and up 3.8% for underprepared students. When you dig in the data, it's important to note that the percentage rate of successful completion and graduation award is 31.4% for prepared students and only 15.2% for underprepared students. So we know we have some work to do with regard to student performances, particularly those who may have a TSI liability. That takes me to the data that's there in front of you. Specifically, Foundations, we call that, Learning Frameworks, it's EDUC 1300. That course is a learning how to learn course, and it's a great preparation for career planning. If you look at your document, you'll see that it tells you that the entire curriculum is geared toward career planning. In terms of student persistence, we run consistently in the 80th percentile to 70th percentile. You'll notice that spring is generally lower. That persistence rate reflects students who are moving on from Weatherford College. If that isn't, we want to see an upward trend in those numbers, but we aren't alarmed by a difference between spring and fall. In terms of student success rates, EDUC 1300, I did some rough calculations for us. They weren't available in our research data at the time that I created this report, but since then, our C or better pass rate averages between 86%, 88%, down to a low of 67%. And again, it fluctuates fall to spring based on who's enrolled. For those of you who aren't aware, EDUC 1300 is a compulsory course for those who have TSI liabilities, typically in reading, writing, or mathematics, or for those students who have had an unsuccessful semester who wish to return from probationary status. That will typically occur after fall leading into a spring semester. So the EDUC 1300 data tells us that we're doing fairly well in terms of those students who take it. The issue here is the only students who take it are those who select into it or who must take it because of TSI liability or because of probationary status. We want to see more students taking this course, but it is an option for them. What we teach in that course, many of those components are also offered in the speech courses, they are an institutional option for Learning Frameworks. So that's the learning foundations. In terms of advising, the advising is more difficult to track directly to student learning outcomes because we have a lot of other things going on. But in terms of advising, what we have is advisor training happening every year with the faculty to tell us about changes that are occurring in curriculum or in the programs so that the advisors are up to speed on what may be changing in terms of what students need to know. We also train faculty members, and President Farmer was very generous this year, and got faculty members involved in the training and also in the advising of students this fall when we were in peak demand. With full-time in college students, we had the CORE, which is the Orientation Program, we did that this year, is the first time we have had a mandatory orientation for anyone. That orientation was for first-time in college students. We had a 75% participation rate for those students that are first time in college. What we learned from this, and if you look, you can see total visits, but in the program using Who's Next, we decreased the time that students wait by using electronic signup systems. So students aren't waiting in the student services office to see advisors anymore. That was a problem getting people handled efficiently, but we're improving there. You may notice that the CORE points toward onboarding of students, and the QEP, which Dr. Atkins and Ms. McKinley talked to us about, also focuses on getting students through pathways. And so many of the things that we would be interested in in terms of institutional performance in advising are ongoing issues. They're not just onboarding issues, it's career long, and the QEP is designed to attack these issues where we're vulnerable. Our data from omnibus surveys tells us that less than half of our students are aware of or take advantage of things like the tutorial center, like effective advising, the social activities and clubs that are available to them. And so we know that engagement improves student outcomes and student performance. So the QEP is specifically geared toward those items that will improve student retention. I hope I haven't taken up too much of your time covering this material. Please.
Thank you for the report. I'm sorry, and I probably phrased my question improperly. I guess my major concern was to avoid the problem the McDowell family had and how we are monitoring the advice given to these students at risk. And you touched on that very, 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 very briefly, mentioning engagement, but it seems to me the goal of Weatherford College is to ease the student stress factor and to not have the problem that family had.
So some things that we are doing there, first, the CORE orientation should be, we're making it mandatory, and that will help because students then have a connection point. What also helps is that the new ERP system makes us build a student degree plan. That degree plan will flag when you, one of the issues was a student repeating a course and wasn't aware. It will flag immediately and tell you, this student has completed this course. I know that it works because I dealt with it earlier this term with a student who said, but I have to take this class. I said, you certainly do not. You completed it six years ago, and we know it's in the record. So that will help. The other thing is getting effective advising, and the QEP is geared toward that. Effective advising for some people means getting them registered, and that is a very important part of what we do. But we want to see ongoing advising and really effective onboarding, especially with students at risk. And at risk can mean anything from socioeconomic status to first-time college student status, first member of the family, it can be any number of things. It can be a student with a learning challenge, and we need to make sure that they're working with an advisor, not whoever is available today, but an advisor tracks with that student. Our new ERP system allows us to work at that more efficiently, and I believe the QEP program and the things that we've written into it will help us to manage that more effectively.
So how often do you touch base with your advisor? How often? We have quarterly checkbacks with key components in our health system. We talk to our nurses on safety issues. Probably once a month, we talk to their supervisors, you know, once a quarter, and it's not a once-a-year thing, it's an ongoing discussion. From what I'm hearing from you, it's a once-a-year orientation?
For some students, it's one and done.
And I'm talking about your advisors?
Right. A student meets with an advisor, first time in college. After that, the student can self-register for the remainder of their career.
Okay.
What we're moving toward is what is effective to manage that student forward. Typically, the challenge that we face is that students want the most efficient path forward, and for that, for many of them, that means self-direction. The reality is that the more we touch with those students to make sure that they're on path, the more likely it is that they will stay on progress and they will succeed. And so we are implementing a more and more intense inter-relational aspect to what we're doing in advising. A higher touch yields a better project. Now, props, a better product. But for students, that means I've got to stop whatever I'm doing today and go visit with an advisor, whether that's in Zoom or in an email or face-to-face. But that's where we're headed. That's what we've been asking about for a very long time, and we're getting support to do it.
And you're having checkbacks with the advisors on the information that they're giving out? I guess that's my question.
Do the advisors get checked in? Oh, yeah. You can look at it through the document trail. When you advise a student, we can see what you did in terms of putting courses on the student courses. Now, the issue here is if a student chooses to change that after you've advised them, then we have to track that the student has done that. But if a faculty member or staff member advises a student, they're told to fill that out in the advising panel, and you give that detail there, and then we know, well, this happened on this date at this time, and this is what the student was advised to do. And what we're asking the students to do is come back at 15, 30, 45, and 60 so that we know they're progressing toward completion if they transfer. Have I answered your question?
Very well. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. If there's not anything else, thank you.
Mike, I have one small question. Early on, you talked about one of the completion requirements or standards is completion of a college reading and writing course, and I'm thinking that possibly somebody reading that might misinterpret it because it's not talking about what I used to teach developmental reading and developmental writing. It's like a reading-based course like history, right? And a writing-based course like composition.
The two key courses that we use for that competency are English 1301, Freshman Composition 1, and History 1301, U.S. History 2, 1865.
Exactly.
They are reading-intensive, and because the faculty have agreed to, they're also writing-intensive courses. So those are the ones that are used for that. Yes, ma'am?
Right. Just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Thank you for that extra research. I appreciate it.
Really good. Really good. Thank you.
What are we here for? We're glad to help.
I got a question on your data on the second-year student coming back.
Yes, sir.
And how it's maybe decreased. Do you think that there's a relationship between these kids coming out of high school with 30 hours of dual credit so they don't necessarily need two years of being on campus, right?
That's very student view. Yes. Yes. There are, when we have 1,800 dual-credit students who are pulling between typically nine and 40 to 50 hours, they're not going to spend a lot of time with us after high school. But that is not necessarily an indication of poor performance. What we want to look at is transfer and/or entrance into a degree or certificate program that yields workforce. And so, yes, thank you.
And all those dual-credit kids are taking that Learning Frameworks class? I mean, that's their first class they take, right? I believe.
A lot of them do, but they don't have to. It depends on their program.
Yeah.
That depends on the school district and what they ask us to offer. It's a partnership, and we offer what they invite us to offer. We encourage it, though.
Sure.
Any other questions, comments on that Agenda item? Hearing none. Moving to Agenda Item 5, 6, the SACC COC Reaffirmation Report. As I alluded to in the President's report, Dr. Atkins has had a long distinguished career, and she is scheduled to retire at the end of next month, and I cannot praise her, Tracy McKinley, and the entire team enough for leading Weatherford College to the most successful reaffirmation visit in Weatherford College history. So thank you, Dr. Atkins. Well done.
Thank you, President Farmer, Board of Trustees. It's my pleasure to tell you about the reaffirmation of accreditation process and provide an overview of the functions of the Office of Institutional Research. We started preparing for our reaffirmation of accreditation years ago, and maybe even more than that. Our compliance here tip is June 1st, and I'm going to pause here. As some of you know, I contracted COVID January 1st. I was out until after spring break. So I have to recognize Stephanie Phil, Stephanie Wafer, I'm going to point at you, and Tracy McKinley, and John, I'm sorry, Lee Butler was a few loose ends since he's been here. But they pulled everything together, got the report in on time. To let you know what a monumental task this was, that low flash drive that we sent to SACC contained over 1,700 pounds. And then the off-site committee asked for 21 additional. So we sent that back to them, along with our QEP proposal to our on-site committee. They asked for some more documentation on library holdings. They didn't trust us when we said how many. They went to see the list. They wanted to see that we followed every academic policy. To do that, you must have a lot of documentation. So again, they went in hard copy and in duplicate. So we had four more three-inch binders full of documentation. That's just to show you that this is a very in-depth process. This hot team visited our off-campus locations at Weatherford College, Wise County, the Education Center in Cranberry, dual-credit high schools in Weatherford, Cranberry, Alito, Springtown, and Pecado. They then conducted many interviews with people on campus. The QEP team, Don was on that team, presented the QEP proposal to them, and the finance department presented an original composition they prepared for Roots. I tell you this because our SACC Vice President, Mary Kirk, said in her 17 years of doing this, she'd never seen a more enthusiastic or wonderful presentation. So kudos to them. So our follow-up report comes in in March. We should receive our reaffirmation of accreditation class of 2020. To give you more of an idea of what's covered in this review, this is the beginning of listing of narratives and documentation that's submitted, from the principle of integrity to the mission statement, the governing board policies and procedures, functions and qualifications of our administrative staff from president down through program directors. They review all full-time and part-time faculty credentials and the adequacy of the number of faculty. They look at our planning and assessment processes to see that we measure and assess student learning and achievement. They look at educational programs, I'm trying to use this here, procedures and practices. The library, library resources are scrutinized. Probably one of the largest areas they do look at is academic support services, hence student support services, to be sure we've got those processes in place that will lend to a quality outcome with our students. They look at advising, counseling, disability services, veteran services, career services, testing, and so forth, not only here at the main campus, but how we deliver those services to online and off-campus students. And finally, they look at the adequacy and transparency of financial and fiscal resources and how we represent ourselves to other agencies. I think the committee spent much of their time on campus looking at our QEP proposal Roots, resources, hope, and opportunities to students. Now, to be sure that everybody was aware of Roots and knew about its intent, we had a sapling contest where departments could pick up a tree sapling and decorate it. So you see a pretty institutional effectiveness sapling with C or oak or croak because our sapling passed away. The winners of the contest, winner of the potter vote, and those were voted home by dropping an acorn in a bucket in front of the tree. Was Root by Yurkins Burke, and she is shown here with President Farmer. And our secret judges selection was the testing services tree of knowledge shown with board member Leila Morris. We had a good time. We also launched a massive social media campaign to inform people about Roots. As you may have seen, this student on the front page of many of her newspapers because she volunteered to take the orphan saplings that no one claimed to care for them. Hopefully, those will live. All in all, we had a very successful reaffirmation process with only two recommendations, one in the standards and one in the QEP to improve assessment processes. And I just want to pause and say that this could not have been the success it was if it weren't for all of these departments. it weren't for all of these departments that contributed and pulled everything together for the final SACS visit. Now, Dr. Palmer asked if I'd tell you a little bit about the Office of Institutional Research, since we have not done that, we really didn't have time to do that before. One of the most dreaded questions I have is, what do you do at Weatherford College? Although every college in the state of Texas and throughout the nation probably has offices of institutional research, it's not easy to put into words what we do. But I asked graphic services brand Chelsea Cochran came through with this graphic. It shows how we take in external and internal data, how we use that data to coordinate the development of the mission statement or revision of the mission statement, the development of our strategic plan, our academic master plan, technology plans, facilities master plan, how we set institutional priorities, assist departments in creating their annual improvement plans that consist of budgeting, implementing, assessing, and a continuous improvement process. We also serve as a portal for internal and external constituents to access data from various sources, the coordinating board, and also our own internal data. Now, as far as the structure of the office, we have four full-time and two part-time individuals. Each member has unique responsibilities to carry out the functions of the office. As the Dean has served in the leadership role, I also serve as the SACS COC liaison, the Carl D. Perkins Federal Funds Contact, and the coordinating board accountability measures contact. Our Executive Director of Institutional Research, White John, he works to ensure data integrity and usefulness from all of our ERP systems. He conducts statistical analysis and research and submits designated state and federal reports. One of Dr. John's primary responsibilities right now is coordinating the impact study that's going to be presented to the board. It's actually a demand study that will be presented to the board as soon as it's completed. Stephanie Phil's wife, Stephanie, she is our Director of Grants Compliance and Program Accreditation and assists with grants development and compliance issues, including expenditure reporting, annual test reviews, and grants audits. Bless her heart.
My thoughts exactly.
And this is a list of grants that Stephanie assists with. There's quite a number of grants that Stephanie works with this office as well. Okay, Stephanie also assists with institutional accreditation as well as program accreditation. And this is a list of other agencies. SACS is not our only accrediting agencies. Several of our programs are also accredited by external agencies. So, Stephanie works with them to be sure that we're referencing ourselves consistently to all of these agencies. Tracy McKinley is our Director of Institutional Assessment and the QEP. She could not be here today, but she trains all of her instructional and non-instructional staff of his assessment process and coordinates the integration of her planning module with campus and with the outcomes module to be sure we can get the data that we need to give to SACS COC and other creditors. She will also be responsible for directing the QEP for the higher duration of the project. Twain Berry is our part-time data analyst and programmer. His main responsibility is maintaining our college's data warehouse and preparing ad hoc Our newest staff member, Shannon, Shannon Milo, is, we share Shannon with Ben Curly. She is our paralegal and administrative assistant, and she provides lots of assistance with our procedure manual, our committee and councils' list and functions and so forth. And she learned by trial by fire with the SACS visit right after she got here, and she came through with flying colors. So, we appreciate Shannon. Okay, I know this has been a quick overview. Are there any questions?
There's a lot of detail in PowerPoint, Ben.
Can I thank you for your leadership? I always felt like Weatherford College was in really good hands when you were tackling things, and I just really want to thank you for everything you've done, and you've done it with such strength and grace.
Oh, thank you.
Here, here. Second.
Thank you.
Dr. Atkins, I would echo that. You have had a tremendous career, and this was unquestionably the pinnacle of that career. And please know that you are valued and respected as the consummate professional.
Thank you. Don't make me cry.
That takes us to Item 5E, the Financial Transparency Award. There are fifty community college districts in the great state of Texas. There are one hundred seventy universities. Combined, that is two hundred and twenty colleges or universities in the great state of Texas. Out of those two hundred and twenty, there are two that have received a Financial Transparency Star from the State Comptroller, Glenn Hagar. And I challenged Dr. Cantrell to challenge her team to make it happen at Weatherford College, and she has met that challenge. So, Dr. Cantrell, congratulations for being in the most elite crowd you could possibly be in with our financials. Well done.
Appreciate it. For those of you that don't have a copy of the Agenda Book, well, you all, and those that didn't have a chance to read, I'll give you a little history about this. This Texas State Comptroller's Office launched this program in March of 2016 to encourage and to recognize cities, counties, school districts, colleges, to make strides for greater government transparency. The local government entities could apply for Transparency Stars in the area of traditional finances, contracts and procurement, economic development, public pensions, and debt obligations. We chose to apply for the traditional finances first and plan our next application. We have to do this every year to keep it up now, but we're going to add the contracts and procurement to that in the future. But with that said, we started into this in the fall of 2019, right before COVID. And then, we were notified in February that we had met all requirements, and they would get back to us. Well, finally, in October of '21, they were gotten back to us and sent us this nice award. You must say, so once again, this is on our website, required to go on our website. Many of the requirements we were doing already, we just were not aware that we were completing a lot of these. Our financial audits that we go through annually do require a lot of these, but it was not documented there on the website. Many of it's in our audits, but people didn't choose to look at that. But now, the taxpayers, it's a good thing for us, for taxpayers, for looking at going into bonds, for SACS or anything else, this is open to them to review and see the health of the institution. So, at this time, on behalf, I certainly did not do all of this myself with the assistance of my comptroller, Lisa Simons, and all the people that work for her, that have done a great job in doing this in the middle of COVID. And so, I would like to, on their behalf and my behalf, to present this to Dr. Palmer.
I love it. Oh, it's already framed.
Yes.
That's awesome.
See, that's neato.
Thank you again, Dr. Cantrell, and please express our appreciation to your entire team. And Mr. Chair, with your consent, as we go into closed session momentarily, I will present this to you and the board on behalf of the college.
Thank you. That would be wonderful.
Mr. Chair, that concludes Agenda Item Number Five.
Okay. We'll now move to Agenda Item Number Six, Future Agenda Items and Meetings. President Palmer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next month, we will be bringing you our annual financial audit and recommending the 2022-2023 academic calendar for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. Anything else under that Agenda Item?
No, sir.
We'll move to Number Seven, Announcements. Mr. Baker.
Yes, sir. You can see that it's a very full calendar for this next month. I won't go through every single item. You have these in your pocket. I will highlight a couple of them. There is a jazz orchestra concert tonight.
Yeah.
It is actually being held at the DOS Heritage and Culture Center, rather than the Alkech. Little different flavor there. It's tonight at 7:30. There'll be a great show this evening. We also have a sporting clay shoot and a fundraiser for our baseball booster club. That's tomorrow out at Carter Property. We have our coyote chase race, five K and one-mile run. This is the twenty-sixth annual coyote chase race, the longest-running race in Parker County for our foundation. Several basketball games coming up at home for both the men and the women. We have an opera performance coming up. That's a kind of a recent development with Rick Rainey doing a tremendous job there. That is Thursday, November the eighteenth at the Alkech. A couple of piano recitals as well, a choir concert on December the second. And I want to highlight our employee awards dinner, which is Thursday, December the ninth. That's the Springs event venue, and board members are all welcome, invited to come.
Anything else, Mr. Baker?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
I'd just like to say that.
Yeah, go ahead.
For everybody who doesn't attend these performances, our Fine Arts Department, you're really missing out because there is some amazing talent down there. Mike Indyson just starred in The Hunchback of Notre Dame, and it was amazing. And the talent that the young people have is truly wonderful. It's all free. You should go.
Thank you, Ms. Morris. Okay, so Agenda Item Number Eight. It's not quite 245. We will take up that, close those Agenda Items under ABC that are, they're all posted in about five, well, about three minutes. And at this point, we will close the open session and go into the closed session here in about three minutes. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. All right. Thank you. Okay, it's approximately two minutes after three, and we've just closed our closed session, and so we're now, at this time, go back into open session, and we will move to Agenda Item Number Nine, Consideration Possible Action. We have property. There are no action items, so no action needed in that today. So we'll move to Number Ten, Consideration Possible Action. Appointment, deployment, all the things that are listed there, and there are no action items to be considered today. So we will move to Agenda Item Number Eleven, Adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. We're adjourned.